Is that, is that better? Can you hear me now? Speak into the mic. Can you hear me now, any better? Now, can you hear me? Andreas, you're my... There he is. Better? Okay, good, good. Okay, sorry folks, we were talking about professionalization and being professional, so... Carry on in that vein. No, but seriously, this is a term, a concept that has been, it's not new, you know, we talk about it for, for a long time. It's, uh, it's something that's very important in terms of improving, as Julia said, in terms of the services that are received by, by population. And the first question I guess is, why, why should we even bother? You know, what's the, the point to this? Why, why does it really matter? And I think there are a number of important reasons, uh, why it actually does. And then we have more technical issues, this is something to be annoying. Now, you can see. So, we know that there are issues with functionality and sustainability of service provision, so functionality of water points and some, uh, long-term sustainability of services. These figures will be very familiar to many of you, there's another anecdotal evidence and there's increasing, um, quantitative evidence of, of, of rates of poor performance. In, in short, you know, we're not doing very well in terms of, of the outputs that we would have expected, uh, for, particularly for rural populations. There's another moral imperative around, if you think about rural as the last mile globally, we're in a, we're in a bit of a difficult position because we know, uh, eight out of 10 people don't even have a basic service in rural areas. So if you ever want to reach the SDGs, we've got to crack the rural part of the equation. We have issues around absorption capacity and this is the, uh, metric from, um, the last report a few years back, where you can see very, very low, and this is self-reported by government, so very low capacity to deliver, uh, improved services in terms of the technical qualifications of, of staff. And there is the, of course, the element of, uh, climate change and the impact. And we often think of the impact of water resources, which of course is an obvious one, that if you don't have water, you won't be able to deliver it in a drinking water supply, um, facility, but the issue around resilience extends to management capacity very much. So if you don't have the wherewithal to plan, to do asset management, to think about financial flows, um, you won't be as resilient to climate impacts. And this is a direct quote from State of the World's Drinking Water Report, uh, 2022. So, how did we get here in terms of where we are today, talking about this professionalization of services? I mean, as we know, water services, what we do in our work and our part of work doesn't, doesn't exist in a vacuum. There are these broader societal demographic events, uh, that are going on all the time in the countries we work in. Um, there are, uh, population increases, demand for better services. People know they have relatives and cousins and aunts and uncles in different, uh, cities and they know what a good service is. So if we look back at the sort of arc of history, um, for the last 50 years or so, we started off with highly sort of centralized approaches, um, with a big focus on hardware, really not that much community participation in the 1950s, centralized governments. And then during the decade of the, the UN decade, 1980 to 1990, much more of a focus on this community participation software, and that became really the predominant model going through from the 1980s onwards, more or less. And really in almost all countries adopting this as a policy for rural water service, uh, delivery. And it was based on user contributions, uh, often under, underpinned by, uh, external aid agencies and donors. And to a certain extent, some governments thought, well, okay, that's been taken care of, we don't really need to worry too much about the rural space because there's lots of these actors going around investing money and so on. As we move on through time, around the end of the 1990s, beginning of the year, the 2000s, people started to ask questions about community management, uh, and the outcomes it was delivering in terms of being able to achieve everything, you know, we, we, we saw that questions were raised, can communities do all of this themselves? Can they manage complex systems, well, relatively complex systems? And there was this call for moving from a voluntary community-based management approach towards this CVM plus, I'm sure you've heard, uh, or supported CVM. And decentralization was continuing apace with a lot of the mandates and the responsibility for provision being pushed down to local government level, but without necessarily the, the authority and the, and the money. So fiscal decentralization wasn't keeping pace. And I think a lot of you in this room are familiar with the outcomes of that. Uh, and then the question is particularly around CVM, you know, was it the model that failed because it had shortcomings or was it the system that failed that model? In other words, it wasn't properly supported and we can have a, a discussion about that, uh, another time maybe. Moving towards the present day, from about the mid 2010s, there was a big push to think about and to work in a way that says it's not just about building things, pipes, concrete, hand pumps and so on, it's about delivering a service. Think about a service, think about what that needs, think about the life cycle costs that are involved. Uh, we have increasing aspirations of rural populations, they know what a good service looks like. And along with that comes a focus on strengthening the enabling environments, particularly around things like regulation, financing. And then the emergence, uh, over this last couple of decades of these various alternative management models. Public utilities expanding into rural areas, um, private operators being delegated, uh, contracts to provide services. And decentralization remains important, but what we're starting to see a little bit is a, is a reconsolidation. So bringing together service areas into more, uh, larger, um, operations that can achieve economies of scale. So very broadly speaking, that's sort of what's happened in the last, uh, at least in our interpretation, the last 30, 40 years. Um, and then Julie was talking about, you know, we don't want to get hung up on the words, the, the actual term professionalization, which I think is, is the case and we need to see it in the context of leading, you know, what can we do to improve service provision and get better services really? Um, but if you ask, you know, 10 of you in this room, you probably get 10 answers. So, um, some people say it's around getting better practices, managerial, technical, um, accreditation, this kind of thing, improving business practices, that's my interpretation. Another one is to say, well, CVM needs to be improved, you know, we, we do need to be, do it better. And we're agnostic, we're not saying, you can see some very nice, very professional, um, applications of community-based management in different countries around the world. It can work well where it's supported well. But it does need that systemic support, um, and it needs a long-term sort of, um, improvements. Other people would say indeed that it's these alternative models that I, I spoke briefly about. And you've seen some nice examples of private delegated models being established at national level, um, sub-national and then at district level in different parts of the world, West Africa particularly. We have some colleagues in the room who, who are involved in some of those, uh, efforts. But they work under different contracting mechanisms, different relationships between governments and regulator, if there is one, uh, and communities. And then there's this question of scale, um, which I mentioned briefly, and, and the ability to pull risk and looking for cross subsidies between wealthier and poorer communities in a service area of operation allows you to attract more qualified staff and achieve economies of scale. I just want to close, and this is the last slide that I've got, and then we're going to open it up and get a reaction from our government colleagues. And they're really the drivers of all of this, everything we talk about is, you know, our perspective and you can read much more about it in, in this report, um, at least for the three countries we've been focusing on. But of course, what matters is what government does, what government says, how it acts, what it invests in, what it doesn't invest in, uh, and how it seeks support from its partners, whether they're large or, or small. And there are many challenges still in this, in this transition, this sort of effort to professionalize. We know, for example, that viability remains problematic, especially for very scattered, small rural populations. And that, that's not going to change. There are efforts to improve the way we finance this, de-risking of finance, using performance-based financing and, you know, I'm sure many of you have heard of UpTime, which is a good example of, of that. Um, and that can work for more concentrated rural populations, rural growth-centered, but the really small rural communities will still likely need some form of subsidy, either on the supply or the demand side. In many countries, it seems that governments are good and it's great that they're putting a flag in the ground, they're putting out a vision for what it should look like and how professionalization, um, should occur and the vision for that. But it's not just about making operators more professional, you need these building blocks, these core systemic elements around regulation, around asset ownership, that are necessary to make those operators, to enable them to function well. Uh, and that takes time and money, as I pointed to at the very end. And we often see hybrids of this, and this is the challenge, that, you know, we're dealing with populations that are very different in nature, different in, um, demographics, in, in, uh, ability to pay local economies. And so you often will, will need perhaps a combination of these models to fit together. And then the challenge is how do you make that work legally? How does it, how does it all knit together? Uh, and that's been a, a big theme of the work we've been doing with the Hilton Foundation. Um, and lastly, and I think this is a really important point that often gets a bit left behind, a bit forgotten, is that this takes a lot of time. So some of the nice arrangements we see in West Africa have taken a decade or more to, to prepare, to work with government, with the regulator, establish an asset owner, uh, owning entity. But it takes a long time to do this, we're still, I think, at the beginning of this journey in many countries. And then the question is, what happens to all these very small communities that are still relying on community-based management? And these are not, it's not insignificant populations, and I pulled some figures from our report that says that we think around 90,000 people in Uganda are still relying on some small water points, uh, um, and in Ghana, over 32,000 with, with 800 pipe networks, pipe schemes that are still community managed. So what's going to happen to them? And the risk is that they become orphans in this process. So who's going to look after them? Um, and that's a, you know, that's a significant challenge. So I think I'll stop there, and hopefully that's set the scene for esteemed government colleagues to come up and react to. I think you might have to use... So I'll hand back over to Julia.
Thank you, Harold, you beautifully said the theme. Thank you, I think you need a round of applause. So thank you for, for showing us the, as you said, the historical arc, but also some of the challenges that, uh, we see uh, along this arc, which obviously looks different in different countries, but there is also many commonalities. So luckily we have, as I said, we have very esteemed, uh, government representatives in the room today. I'm going to introduce them now to you and then I'll invite a few of them to come forward to tell us what's happening in their country. So from Ethiopia, we've got Your Excellency Ambassador Aspo D'Nghamo, the State Minister for Wash. So thank you very much for being here. And, uh, Your Excellency, you've come with Abera Endesho Abedé, who is Senior Advisor to the Minister and Lead for International Affairs. So thank you for being here, Abera. In Ghana, we have Dr. Kogjo Mensa Abrampa, the Director General for the National Development Planning Commission. Thank you for being here. Um, George Boaché, the Regional Minister from the Ahafo Regional Coordination Council. And also Suli Abaidu, uh, who is here to represent the Ministry of Sanitation and Water Resources. And finally, in Uganda, we've got Dr. Kales Tindji Mugaya, Director of Water Resources Management at the Ministry of Water and Environment. And Professor Pamela Mbebe, Chairperson of the National Planning Authority. Thank you really very much for being here today, we're very privileged to have you. And I'd like to start with our colleagues from Ethiopia. Abera, would you like to come forward and tell us what's happening in Ethiopia? And tell us if the presentation that Harold gave does resonate in your context? And what's the government vision for professionalizing rural water supply? What are the trajectories you're taking and also what are some of the challenges you're facing, um, in your country? Would you like to come forward, Abera?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for coming to the Hilton Foundation and the Gwakw Council, bringing us together. Uh, you are lucky enough to have your full seat in this and colleagues looking for seats even. Uh, this shows that the, the agenda itself is very interesting and attractive, very timely. Uh, we've been, you know, seven years away from SDG reporting period. And this is a very, very fundamental, you know, agenda that we need to discuss with. So coming to the point, I think as Ethiopian government, being, you know, the second largest populous country in the region, in, in the continent, next to Nigeria, we are, you know, a very historic country, having 120 million people, maybe some total of two, three, four, or five African countries, very populous country with huge potential, plus the challenge as a aspect. So nationally, while we are, you know, struggling to deliver our, to discharge, of course, our governmental responsibilities, being, you know, duty bearer for the fellow Ethiopian citizens, that's right for us to have access to Wash, both for rural and urban settings. Uh, we are trying our level best, working with those, uh, resourcing from the treasury source, from the development partners, from the, you know, as I say, source, private sectors and community initiatives, of course, here and there. So with this, in the context of Ethiopia, uh, we have our national policy whereby the urban settings, uh, was supposed to be a full cost recovery principle, whereby each investment in the urban settings could have its own full cost recovery principle. For a utility given in the, you know, in the urban settings, it has to have a full cost recovery principle. In the rural settings, we have the operational maintenance cost recovery principle. That's what our national policy, uh, is saying all about, the governance, management, service delivery and, and the other related aspects. So in that case, uh, when we look into, uh, the issue of, the issue of, you know, rural water supply aspect, uh, earlier, as was mentioned in the, uh, previous presentation slides, uh, in Ethiopia, for the last couple of decades, uh, the rural water supply management practice has been based on voluntary election and voluntary democratically, you know, election process of the washcombs, the washcombs, we call them. Sometimes we call them water committees, sometimes washcombs and, and different meanings. It all depends on the locality and who the implementer is, who the owner of that project is, given that the ultimate ownership is in the hands of the communities. So recently, we have also started, you know, the Washington Association whereby we are transitioning from the wash committee, voluntary-based wash committee management practice into rural public utility modeling. And we have different projects, of course, the National Flagship Programme, which we call it the One Wash National Programme, which brings together the government ministries of water, health, education, finance, the four, you know, washline ministries together, and, and all the big donors of the sector. And the CSO is being represented by the, you know, the key, the key engineers, where represented the private sector, the contractors. Uh, that is where we came up with the National Flagship Programme, the One Wash National Programme. And this programme is talking about having one plan, one budget and one reporting system. So this time Ethiopia do have its own one consolidated wash account. We don't have any individual, you know, donor account this time. We are already ending up the second phase of the CW, the consolidated wash account, uh, and, and stepping into phase three of the One Wash National Programme. And in this case, we have one national programme plan, that's one programme document. And we have one reporting system, both for physical and integrated financial reporting system, and one, one planning and monitoring system. That's the way how we bring all the big donors, including the World Bank, FGV, UNICEF, all the big donors, the giant donors of the sector, to put their resource into one basket. That's what, what the programme we are currently pulling. Uh, with this, equally important is for NGOs, NGOs are implementing their own, managing their own resource and implementing their own projects, but with the support of the government. And we appreciate, of course, for that. In this case, when we come to the rural water supply system, when we look into the non-functionality, uh, it has its own list of reasons for non-functionality. As was, you know, mentioned earlier in the presentation slides, uh, the very reason for, uh, non-functionality could be voluntary-based management of the schemes. Uh, a committee, which is a wash committees, are democratically elected by the user communities in that particular community. So that's voluntary based, you don't have any enforcing mechanism, of course, they are supposed to have their own bylaws. That bylaws is a legal document, uh, which is to be used in that particular community. The, the water office at the district level or at the water office level will be drafted and presented for the communities to discuss, and they will adopt it in their own local context. So once approved, the committee will take that as a bylaw, as a legal framework. Uh, in that, in that legal framework, what was mentioned is the water tariff issues are to be set and, uh, the payment issues are to be set because water is not only a social good, it's supposed to be an economic good. So, uh, government in between the two, you know, being a social good, courses to have the right to access to water. And of course, water being scarce resource, uh, which is to be, you know, consumed, uh, that's another, another part of the economic good. So government is, you know, responsible to balance both, you know, water being social and economic good. In that respect, the issue and the, the potential challenge is the way how we could make the rural water supply economically viable. And, and this issue of operational maintenance, cost recovery principle, uh, being, being practically, you know, grounded into, into practice. And as was, of course, said earlier, uh, we don't have such, you know, big policy matters. Uh, policies are of course running a... Running a... But what matters for us is the issue of affordability. And, uh, we as government, as I said earlier, the non-functionality rate, you know, varies from, you know, nearly 17% to 40% sometimes. It all depends on where, where the schemes are and the nature of, you know, that particular community. Ethiopia being, you know, very vast country, having different communities of different religion. Uh, we have the agrarians, we have the pastoralists, and, and we have a mix of course. So pastoralist communities, if, if you go into the eastern part of the country, you know, communities, pastoralist communities are moving from place to place. They don't, you know, stay for a year with, with that particular scheme. They are moving around with their cattle. So there, there is no, you know, anyone who is taking care of those schemes in the absence of why those pastoralist communities are moving around. So in that case, uh, the, one of the very critical learning we came up with after decades of practice is the issue of transition of this voluntary-based washcombs management practice into professionalization. And professionalization in the sense, we don't expect for that to happen, you know, graduates from universities directly to manage it, rather the TVT's. You know, graduates from the technical vocational training college, they can well manage it. And this is not a new history, it's not a new talk for us. I, I, I know maybe Vini is here, uh, I saw him in the morning in one of the sessions, very, very much. I used to work in water, uh, years before, and water has already started, you know, some decades, 20, 30 years before in Ethiopia, where, you know, the water board management practice system has been one of the very excellent exercises we have been doing with, especially in Oromia region, where, you know, the water boards are established and the board, like the one we have it in the urban setting, utilities are supposed to be managed by the board system. And in the rural, uh, schemes of, you know, multi-village water supply system, schemes, the rural water supplies are supposed to be managed by the board. And those board members, you know, discussing with their own internal regulation are deploying, you know, professional expertise. This is a practice, we had it already, you know, some two, three decades before. Uh, so this is not a new history, what matters for us is, you know, working it on aggressively. Because at this time of, you know, climate change, drought, practice now, earlier before, we have been drilling at the shallow ground depths where we can have access for water at the depths of 30, 50, 70, 60 meter, you know, meter depths of water. But this time, you need to drill deeper and deeper. So in this case, the complex, the systems are becoming very complex and it's not supposed to be managed by voluntary committees. So you need to have professional, you know, experts to be deployed and to be in place so that the systems which are supposed to provide water for multiple communities, multiple communities, multiple village should be carefully managed by professional experts. Uh, we are deploying now this time, uh, if we look into the different projects that we are currently implementing, uh, the type of, you know, powering water from the groundwater source is becoming, we are now changing it into, into, you know, solar powered systems. Earlier, many of the water supply schemes in Ethiopia are supposed to be decent power. And this time, you know, this is not becoming affordable. So we are strategically shifting into solar-powered, you know, water supply systems. So solar is a technical expert, you know, it requires a kind of expertise knowledge. So that is, you know, some of our key learnings that we are, we are working, uh, to bring up this issue. So we are talking this about in terms of the value for money, in terms of ensuring sustainability. As I said, for us to be able to decrease and significantly minimize the non-functionality rate, I think this professionalization is something that we need to work around. So this is, uh, we as a Ministry of Water and Energy have recently revised our policy and strategy, our prospective plan, our three years of investment plan in the ministry and in those at the Council of Ministers level. So one of the very critical areas that we are shifting into is professionalization of the water supply system. This is something that many of our NGO stakeholders are currently working with. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Abera, and I'm sure many of the topics that you've raised will resonate with other, other countries as well. We'll come back to you in the panel discussion. And I'd like you to, to maybe hold your thoughts, write down your questions for Abera and we'll come back to you after we've heard from Uganda and Ghana. So, uh, with that, I'd like to invite the Honourable Regional Minister from Ahafo Region to come and join me here and tell us a little bit about what's happening in your region and what these trends look like.
As you have already made aware, my name is George Boaché. The Regional Minister for one of the new regions in Ghana called the Ahafo Region. In America, you say a governor, but in Ghana, it's the Regional Minister. I have four. It's in the southern parts of the Atlantic region and has a population of over 600,000. Water provision is key to, uh, the governor's structure or system in our region. That is one of our major areas that we are being concentrated on. Because it is said that water is life. And therefore, we have to do whatever is within our powers to ensure that our people get good water supply. And in doing so, we rely on a lot of agencies, governmental and non-governmental. With IRC, IRC being one of our key partners. And recently, we also have support from, uh, Teleport Foundation to be able to supply adequate water to Ghana, uh, to Ahafo. By taking, looking at Ghana as a country, our water provision is from two sources. Ghana Water Company and Community Water and Sanitation Agency. The Ghana Water Company is for the urban areas. And the Community Water and Sanitation looks at water supply in the, uh, rural areas. And since my region falls under, uh, the urban area, is a very urban region. Well, most of our people live in the rural areas with some few, uh, urban towns. So, water provision is from the Community Water and Sanitation Agency. You have the small water supply systems and, uh, you have the borehole pipe systems in the typical rural areas. When you look, we take the, the pipe on, the, the borehole pipe systems, the management of these systems after they have been provided is under a group called the Wassan Group. It's a community of people who are not... It's a community of people who are nominated by the people themselves, look after the water system. So it's, you, you fetch and then pay, but the amount that is paid is so minimal for everybody to be able to afford. So when there is any problem or any challenge with the system, it is the money that is accrued from the sales of this water that is used for the maintenance of the system. The question is whether people are able to pay and for that matter, the systems are able to be repaired when there is any damage. The answer is no. Most often, most of these things come back to the disaster assemblies and the municipal assemblies. Because people are unable to pay at times, and they don't even pay at all. They come, they fetch and they don't pay because of the fact that they all live in the same area. And there is this idea that familiarity brings contempt. Because they know themselves, when, for example, my, my brother comes to fetch and the person looking at that structure and my, my brother has no money to pay. I would sit down for my brother to go and fetch our diesel water to drink. And it becomes safe for me to go back and they take care of him. So you gather to fetch and they go. So most of the time, people don't pay. And then when you come to the urban areas, you have the smaller town water systems. And these smaller water systems are under water bosses, you have water bosses who look after these systems. You have the same problem, in the case of the water bosses, because they are not technical men. They are not able to look after the systems where, when it comes to maintenance, they come back to the various assemblies within which the, the system is situated for money before maintenance can be, can be made. And then, then again, because they are not able to collect risk and charges and fees. When it comes to the payment of electricity, they are unable to pay. So at times, they, in all cases, it is the VRI, they come and they cut on the systems. And therefore, there will be no electricity for water to be pumped, for people to enjoy the water. So that is also a big challenge. And then also, we don't have qualified people to take care of this, of the system. And non-payment, non-payment of the fees also is a big challenge. So if you look at all these things, then the question you ask yourself is, do you have to sit down for this to go to mess up? The answer is no. That is where personally I agree with the professionalization of the system. Recently, Community Water and Sanitation Agency has come out with a strategy that they are no longer going to be only providers of the system, but they are also going to take up management of the system. But in this case, it is all compulsory, whoever is willing to hand over, hand over their system to them, they will manage the system professionally to ensure maximum use. So in my region, the Ahafo region, management of the region sat down and decided that if that is the case, we are going to hand over our systems to Community Waters and Sanitation to manage them professionally for us. We started with one system, which is at, is at the regional capital, Goso. After a year of managing the system, you found out that they had a lot of money, they could pay their, their workers, their workers, their workers they employ were also qualified. The system was running well, electricity because they were able to pay everything, correlation of the, with the system were well managed. So we came back, sat down, and they said that if that is the case, then we are going to hand over all the systems to them. So we wrote to the various assemblies to hand over all the systems to Community Water and Sanitation Agency. So as I speak, the transition is needed gradually. If you take a, a, a district like Asunah First Services Assembly, there are ten systems. They have started a gradual transition to the Community Waters and Sanitation Agency. As we typically saw, Tana Lop and Saudi have all started. There is only one district where you want to, we need to experiment and see, that is, as you typically know, because of the intervention of IRC, in that particular district, their systems are well managed. Because IRC is helping them with technical support. So we have decided to allow that particular district to operate for some time for us to see if they will be successful, which I hope they will. But with the other business, we have started the transition to community water and sanitation so that the system will be professionally managed for the people to derive maximum resource from it. So this is how things are done in the Ahafo region. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your great presentation. And it's really interesting to see again different pathways. You talked about TWSA, TWSA is not going to take on all the schemes, I think, in the country. We're just talking about pipe schemes in certain cases. There are other management arrangements and we'll come back to that in the panel discussion. I'd like to invite Dr. Callis to come and tell us a little bit about what's happening in Uganda and then we'll take a round of questions. So thanks for your, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you, thank you organizers for inviting us to share our perspectives on this topic. Again, building on what has been mentioned, also looking at professionalizing the framework for one of them, the rural water infrastructure in Uganda. Decided to come with some slides so that some of you can see where Uganda is located and also what we have been able to do. I ran through the objectives of the framework, the background, the structure, the steps we have taken to professionalize the framework, the progress we have made so far, the actions we are taking and how we are moving forward. The framework focuses on professionalizing management of water facilities in rural areas. Again, in Uganda, urban areas, the services are run by operators, we have our national water strategy corporation. And for smaller towns, we have what we call umbrella of water and sanitation. And the rural areas have depended on community-based management system. And of course, we note that in the new approach, we are paying strength in the district authorities through the water supply service boards that are formerly outsourcing the operation to what we call area service provider. Traditionally, the community manage these systems and have had challenges of one of them. Operator maintenance best guy has kept going down. But also, as has been mentioned by the other countries, we are now shifting from hard-pump boreholes to motorized boreholes where we are planting them using solar. You cannot get the communities actually to do it. So we are building on what has been done under the community-based maintenance system, trying to improve. And the framework provides the overall guidance in the management of water systems outside the areas where utilities are. Our framework has been impressed for a short while, around twenty nineteen. We have been able to roll it out, we have had the, it's launched in twenty twenty. Also have supported developing manuals to ensure that the water boards and also the air service providers are well guided. And this framework has been bought, bought into by our partners, has been highly consultative with the civil society, government partner, the private sector and others. And we are seeing efforts going on in the various regions of the country. As you may see on the map here, we have divided the country into regions, we call them rural water, regional centers that are part of the ministry but coming closer to the people so that they can provide services and support to their districts. As well as ensuring that their capacity is built at that level. What are the good features of this system? Again, we are calling it community-based maintenance system plus. Well, through our community-based maintenance system, we are strengthening it and building on experiences and lessons learned. Under this framework, users pay for water monthly basis or power more water and these are households and institutions. We have area service providers who are contracted to operate and maintain, maintain all water systems as defined by water supply and sanitation board. So the owners are water supply and sanitation boards and they contract area service providers. And here we are bringing them newer and public-private partnership model so that we can manage these systems. And the area service providers take responsibility for collecting the money and also banking it. So accounts are open and the money is banked there. And they are also responsible for ensuring that we have quality payers. While our regional centers are providing due diligence to ensure that what is provided is meeting the quality. And this is how it looks like, we have a government at the national level, Minister of Water and Environment, and we have created regional centers, the six of them. And here they are responsible for O R M, breeding and rehabilitation and supporting local governments. And here then you have the local governments who, which become water authorities. And in there, they are the ones now who contract area service providers. And of course, at the local level, we have some county boards and also have water and sanitation committees at that level. And here we also have pump mechanics and, and, and the teams, the caretaker who operate under the area service provider. So this framework, again, supported at national level, regional level, and then at the local level, that's where we have the service providers coming in, providing the service. So we have started again, looking at the manuals so that you have the rules over the game, the guidance provided. We have disseminated this framework at the national level and regional level so that we can have buy-in and ensure that everybody is moving forward. And here I have also started getting the water boards at the local government level and also identifying area service providers, training them and ensuring that we have the boards that have been approved and also the structures professionalized. So we are moving stepwise, building capacity, getting buy-in and also ensuring that everybody takes responsibility. So as a way of moving stepwise, we formed the district water and sanitation service boards, which prepare business plans, then they apply for gazetement, the Minister of Water and Environment gazetes them so that they operate in a good manner. Then we sign the performance contracts with them and then we prepare terms of reference for procurement of area, of area service providers. So again, at the national level, we ensure that we continue guiding them and supporting them to do their work. So progress we have made so far, the framework has been disseminated at the national level, the regional level. So now all the local governments or the stakeholders are familiar with the framework and I must say that they are bought into it. They have developed the manuals to support the, in the implementation of the framework. And our regional centers are supporting the districts to implement the framework. We have received some C D funding, pilot test the ground, so we are working. Each of the regions have selected two districts so that we can pilot it and see how it goes before we roll it out. And already, a number of districts have formed their district water supply and sanitation boards. And most of the boards now have applied for approval at the municipal level and we are evaluating the applications. We also have some districts which have already got area service providers. And these ones are being evaluated so that they meet the requirements according to the manual. And of course, we did a review in Nigeria this year by the stakeholders and have come up with an actual plan. So the actual plan requires us to ensure that you coordinate and house the best of the stakeholders. As you can see, there are many stakeholders, one of the stakeholders after the task from the national level to the community level. We also want to establish and strengthen the management structures in a number of local governments and also fast track the establishment of the authorities and also identify and attract area service providers. Again, this is the new, so we want to identify and, and help them to grow. And of course, want to ensure that we have effective stakeholder engagement and communication so that we can get everybody to, to buy into this. Moving forward, we note that the process is actually quite costly. We have inadequate funds and of course, we need to form these boards and train them. We need to identify the area service providers. And of course, we don't want them to take on sources, systems which are broken down. So they have to be brought up so that they are able, otherwise, they will not manage. And this is where we want to give attention. We are also getting our regional centers taking lead in supporting the districts so that they are able to perform their functions. At the ministry, we are creating also a budget line for operational maintenance. We have a conditional grant that we give the local governments. So we are now adding in a component of operational maintenance so that then they, they can be able to move forward. We are developing capacity of our regional centers, they will support the local governments and also coordinating area service providers and also peer-part change establishment. Then, of course, we are also want to develop a criteria and parameters for type setting. Also want to make sure that whatever is charged is based on real reasoning and how this set is actually well managed and also stakeholder engagement strategy. And we would want that by the end of this financial, that is June next year, they will, we have full operational district boards and area support service providers. Again, thank you very much and we look forward to working regarding this.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kelly, for that very comprehensive review of what's going on in, on Uganda. We realize you've heard a lot from this podium, this end of the room. We're always, as ever, against the clock. But do we have a few questions for our speakers about what they've talked about in terms of this, their vision of how to get to professionalized rural water services? Two or three questions, very focused, please. We have Lamessa, Vini and Lady in the background, I don't know.
Unfortunately, the microphone is not working, so we'll ask you to please maybe stand up and try to speak as loud as you can.
Thank you. I will speak loudly. Thank you for that, for those feedback. Two questions. One, a third role for our term of professionalization is improved in the sustainable services, which actually comes with cost. And the most of that cost is expected to come from users, which is our time. How are we balancing the service providers' aspect and the users' aspect of professionalization? About making users aware about their rights and responsibilities to pay for improved services. That's the first question.
Can you make one question, Lamessa?
Yeah, just one.
You can have a little hand on your first question.
From the last presenter from Uganda, professionalization is a process, is time-consuming, is resource-consuming. How patient are we as a government, as a donor, who invest on it, which takes a long time? Are we really there to use our time?
Those are two very good questions. We'll take all of the questions, I think, and then ask our various presenters to respond. Vini, you are next in the line. Do you have any question?
Yeah, I can just stand up. Yeah, just a quick one for, for any of the government presenters. They're great presentations. If we look at countries that have universal access to water supply that last is a managed service, they're using a number of different service delivery models to achieve that. They're using self-supply, there's still some of them are using community management and utility-based models. And that's in countries that have universal access. Now that's achieved, those, those models are supported by massive public subsidy. So just a question, how, how long do presenters, analysts think it will take to reach the levels of massive public subsidy as we look forward to twenty fifty? We've heard about some of the challenges with blended finance and these issues. When, when do you think this public subsidy might be available?
I think that covers Lamessa's second, but the question about patience, how long will the government will it spend? Last question, please, Lady in the Brown, please introduce yourself.
Yeah, I am Rafa Mahala, I'm working in the DRC, completely different context. Please follow my questions, like what is the really the role of the community of users in all the different, the three countries that do not do that? But my main question is for Ethiopia, where there are four land ministries to be together in one wash. In a country like the DRC, there are eight ministries of land from, think that they are all in charge of one. How do you come up from four to one and then us from eight to one?
Maybe you can go and have coffee with your delegates. But Julie, do you want to recap?
Yeah, I can start recapping. Yeah, I can start recapping if I can read my own writing. Yeah, so there was a question about uh improving services, increasing access has a cost. How do we balance this increased cost with uh the rule of users? How do we make users aware of this additional cost and their responsibilities? Maybe I'll start with that and ask if any of the presenters would like to react to this question. I think that speaks nicely to maybe. Uh Ethiopia, you mentioned the era that one of the guiding principles of the national policy was O N M cost recovery, just starting with that in rural areas. So this is already a challenge, right? How do you go from this already being a challenge to increasing services, increasing costs to make services sustainable? So the question of cost affordability, have you where that goes?
Yeah, thank you very much. I mean, one of the very limitations we have as as a ministry of water and energy. Particularly on the ground is that they show encouraging and pushing the user from a decent service to pay for the service. And one of uh our key stakeholders, just a week before he came to my office and we have had. Mans extended, you know, national exhibition, water and energy exhibition in the office of the president. Just many of the government officials and diplomats coming together. With that exhibition and he has been exhibiting his technology, that's, you know, water purification technology. And and he has been talking to me in my office that they want to supply that technology or a very simple handy. You know, water purification technology he came up with. And he has asked me in case if we could sell, you know, a little of water for seventy seventy cents. And I just calculated it, per jernica it comes seventy Ethiopian per jernica. And I just take this into consideration of the affordability. You see, seventy Ethiopian per for for a very.
Twenty five.
You know, twenty five liter of, you know, jernica, the yellow jernica, we use it of course in Ethiopia. And seven per jernica. And I talked to him, look, now this is this much amount of cost. Do you think this is affordable at the, you know, the poorest, you know, rural communities? It's not, it's not. We are still striving to work around at least for communities to pay for the set price at least. For the same time, so uh to the question that is raised by Lamessa. One of the areas that we as government of water and energy need to do is that. For us to be a little bit aggressive for the community to understand that the water supply is economic no good. It's not only social, that is something that we need to push for. I have many of the resources, including World Vision, here there is water, many of them, they are here with me. They are investing a lot in the water supply system, especially in the rural area. And the ultimate accountability and responsibility of ensuring sustainability of the management practice is, in my view. It's not the role of that particular region, right? So in that case, uh uh we need to work a little bit, one step forward to make sure that communities are paying for the services. That's something that we need to, you know, close the loop.
Thank you very much, a bit of a bit of a joke. Can people hear at the back? I'm just a bit worried you can hear more than. That's good. So the second, there are actually two questions, which maybe we can roll into one. One was around the patience of donors and governments. In terms of funding uh for this transition and I think there's a slightly related question around how long? Will they be uh, this requires enormous public subsidies. And um how long will they be willing to do that for? I think, Vinnie, was your question.
When when will governments be in a position?
When will they be in a position to pay for? Okay, that's a slightly different question. Do we have anybody from the from the presenters who can speak to this question of? Governments' patience and ability to pay for these kind of costs, which was nicely, I think, to Dr. Calat, you flagged it yourself, that there is a big cost to this. Is the government of Uganda willing and able to meet these and when can you do it? Or do you need?
Well, well, my perspective is first of all, water is a human right. And I think governments by their nature are responsible for providing this service to the people. And of course, governments don't have enough money, and that's why what is a partner and come and support them. So the user, what the users pay, because many users have actually been taking water really. And they feel both, wanting to pay for the service. And then governments will provide the publicity and that's why we are calling upon our partners, the civil society, the private sector. And our government partners come and support us. Of course, governments are probably meet with other needs beyond water. So if it was only water, we are looking at, then we would say, put all the money on water and you provide the service. So to me, I think, we have a wrong way to go, but we have any choice. I'm going to say we we can't provide you all the money, then we stop, then what happens to the people? They die, although we are afraid they don't get the service. Then we die of waterborne disease and then we have it all. So to me, I think. It's a journey we are taking, we lose the wrong journey, but I don't have, I don't think we have any other option apart from walking this journey. That's what I can think.
Thank you very much. And I think we'd invite um. To have a discussion with the colleagues in Ethiopia about how they managed to create a cross-tactical coordination. Because I don't think we can, we can answer in in a minute. I'd like to invite all the panelists to come forward because we've prepared some nice questions for you too. So please come and join us um from Ghana, Uganda and Ethiopia. And we'd like to now dig a little deeper into some of the issues you've touched on in your presentations. So we'd like, okay. So as you move forward. Come and join us. This is a very nice table.
Sorry, I have a bit of a cough.
Oh, okay. Would you like some water?
Um, oh, sorry, it's Michael's. Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. Don't worry.
Okay. So we have another technical issue, but we will, um, it's okay. So we'd like to go back to three of the topics that have been mentioned more or less directly in your presentations. One is about how do you operationalize a policy or a vision, however formalized it is. You've mentioned in Uganda that there was this O N M framework that's been approved in twenty twenty, you're in the process of making it happen.
Right.
Uh in Ethiopia, you talked about a clear government vision, the priority to professionalize services, but you also talked about these challenges. How do you ensure uh cost recovery and affordability? How do you bring new skills into these arrangements? How do you legalize washcoats to make them professional? All of these are issues that you're grappling with. And in Ghana, of course, the policy situation is a bit more in flux. We know that C W S A is changing roles and it's ongoing. But there are also going to be other arrangements that will remain for the other proportion of the population. And also C W S is not going to just take on all the schemes in one go and we're just talking pipe schemes. So this is the context you've laid out. And so with that in mind, I'd like to ask, maybe starting with Uganda.
Right.
As you operationalize the O N M framework, um you you've laid out some of the issues. I'd like to talk about one issue that you you mentioned. How do you find A S Ps? How do you make this a viable business for A S Ps to come in and take on the role that they're expected to take?
I mean, yes, thank you very much. Obviously, this is a new thing we are taking on. Uh one of the things we want to make sure that the schemes are viable. Otherwise, if they are not viable, if they are broken down and they cannot provide the required service, then A S P will not actually. Uh be interested in taking them up, but also want to make sure that we build their capacity. Again, this is a new work. We are going to look out for them, build their capacity. Then create linkages with the different players, the 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 districts or regional centers. So that they are able to to be helped and of course, the other thing we are talking about is. Ensure that they are guided on how to collect the money, how to utilize the money, how to promote the. The 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 inputs so that they can run these services in a professional manner. So we have a big road to break to support them so that they can be able to do the job. By their nature now, they really don't have the capacity, and that's why we want to make sure that we move forward with them. And support them to grow and provide the service.
Thank you very much. We'll come back to that when we talk about how external partners can support you in this effort. And I'd like to now move to Ethiopia, neighboring country. Um can you maybe share some reflections on on the issues that you're encountering and operationalizing this vision?
Uh thank you very much. Uh good evening, everybody. Uh I I thank the presenter, a really very well articulated uh. You know, research program you have presented and that has reflected a lot of. Things which we are already undertaking. Basically, when we say um. The the water is a right, to get the water is a right, because you know, in two thousand and six, United Nations declared. Getting water at a community level and to the the communities is a right. So at the government, we have the obligation. We have the obligation to 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 provide uh portable and suitable water. And enough to the community. That is how we have started. What we are saying is to ensure sustainability, it is a matter of operation and maintenance. And keep that scheme operating for long and ensure sustainability. So uh uh in Ethiopia, as a government, we have the obligation to uh. Pay for initial investment. Put the scheme in order. And the operation and the management of that is belonging to the community. Uh some years back. As my colleague has said, uh you know, getting water at very shallow level. We drill boreholes fitted with hand pumps. Set a wet sand committee, then they operated. With a small operational maintenance fees. With climate change is rampant this time. The water level is going deep. And we require to drill deep boreholes fitted with pumps, submersible pumps. And the energy mechanism is required, whether it is diesel generators or grid connected. Or utilization of new technology of solar. So all this has this operation cost. That operation cost is bigger than the community required to have that water in their yards or in their. The apartment, when we were utilizing shallow boreholes or. Uh spring protected at the community level is no more existent this time. So then the viable operation and the maintenance issue is very important. So the tariff of water is getting bigger and bigger. So the community, this time around, the 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 level of economy is also improving in some part of the community. And the the operation and the maintenance costs are required to be covered by the community itself. So that is how we are utilizing uh the 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 professionals. Who operate this new normal, as we said, it's a new normal. Because the operational uh costs are very high, we need uh to have a big community at uh, you know. Multi-village. Uh water supply schemes, which is a complex. And the professional input is required, so the community are paying more for operation and maintenance. And the tariffs have been set at the rural level and the 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 managing scheme is also. Or the manag- the management model is changing from time to time and that is how we professionalize the. The system.
Thank you very much. Would you like, Mr. Dr. Kojo, maybe to share some reflections in Ghana if you want? Um about any processes that are ongoing to operationalize. Government policy?
Thank you very much. Let me say that, yes, quite a lot, but. I'll begin by saying that a lot of, there are there are about thirty major areas where. There are significant changes in order to improve water and also to improve the situation of assets. The first one has to do with the whole policy regime. This is going through a very fast transition because. There are so many practices involved in the provision of water. And with that comes so many varied policies, plans, regulations, which pertains to the specific areas of action. So those who garden, the the government itself and the public institution thereon. The role of involvement partner, the civil society, so the policy regime is to bring all of these together. And not only looking at the water sector, there are other sectors which also affect by way of input. And also the water sector affect by way of output to these sectors and therefore all of them have to come into the policy arena. And this by far has been done and being looked at, looked at in the sense that there are other policies which are. Might be construed in other sector who could be either complement or some of them conflicting. With this water sector. So the National Water Plan Commission, for instance, is looking at that whole regime. And then be able to organize it. But the most important one, these policies reflected institutional arrangement for providing water. I'm sure the regional minister alluded to a lot of these things in his presentation, but it's very key. If you want to move from being just an agency implementing to a whole utility providing the service. Then there must be a new relationship, there must be a new role, clear responsibility, accountabilities, the regime might be provided. And this is very key, not only for the government, but even the private sector. How would the private sector also like to invest? In which areas of the water regions is the level that they want to invest? And there is also a whole public-private partnership, you know, act, which has been act to be able to support this arrangement. And this is very important to make the private sector feel secure, very confident to be able to invest in that. And so it is with also the government partner. But last but not the least, there are several of them, but let me just mention the area of capacity value. In order to implement these plans which are prepared at the national level for the water and sanitation sector, we also need to look at. Who is going to do it? What are the responses? What skills do they require? What knowledge level do they require? And this is at all level, the regional, the utility level, the national and also at the district level, the community level. The regional minister mentioned the WASSA, which is the community-based management group for water. What capacity do they have? Many of them have been members for eighteen years, you know, never gone through any knowledge development and others. How do we bring them and react to these systems? The last one is the finance. I've mentioned the PPP, the private sector feeling comfortable to be able to invest in that. But the key thing here, what the regional manager uh minister said was that when the systems were given to community for water. And they rebounded, they were able to sell at for the for the for the users and the users were able to buy. So it is also for the safe water arrangement, also in this. The key thing here is the management. When you manage it well, it reduces the cost, it establishes an efficiency level. It's it makes the the fee for water also affordable for the client. And therefore, there's a win-win situation. They have a reliable set, it's a predictable set where they can go and buy at any given time. And so it is because of the food management here, you also have a reduction in cost. And I always use the word waste, the waste part of it is just about thirty percent of the cost. And if they're able to remove that through improved management, definitely the client will be able to afford. And be able to support this regime and make it more viable. This is what I would say, but it's a whole process which is going on and we hope that given the plant, which is about five years. We should be able to attain what we've said for ourselves. It's one of the key targets. For a six point two, a six point three, that if we don't achieve anything at all in the L D Gs, we should be able to attain those one. Provide water and provide sanitation for every household in the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very clear and thought through.
very clear and thought-through response. And Struckley, you're trying, you have to fight on many fronts. There are many things you have to address in this, this matrix. But were there any reactions from colleagues here before we, you have one more round of?
I, I can only add on, um, from the planning perspective, I think that, um, for Uganda, similar to what Ghana is doing, uh, focused on infrastructure development and looking at, um, just like Dr. Kalis said, improving the, um, mainly rehabilitating the non-functional sort of, um, water sources, the boreholes and, and wells and pipe systems, so that framework that, uh, he talked about can find, um, usable systems and, and enable communities to, to, to manage them effectively. Of course, institutional strengthening is very key, and that's where government is focused now in ensuring that what he presented actually functions and, and, and focuses mainly on, uh, ensuring that the local government structures, the, um, district water offices, the user committees are actually functional. So there is a deliberate effort on the part of government to ensure that all these are well, um, established and that, that their work in community participation, uh, increasingly across in getting, uh, the communities to be involved is something we're, um, putting funding in and deliberately intentionally trying to get them to work. But as he said as well, financing is key and we're looking at building strategic partnerships to ensure, uh, that it's done. These are all the goals that we're focused on. Thank you.
So, thank you for that complimentary input. Um, one thing that we didn't hear so loudly, or I didn't hear so loudly, but it's almost five thirty on the first day, so it might be just jet lag or something, is around regulation. And that is one thing that in our study came up quite strongly. And we know that you're all dealing with regulation in different ways, some through the ministries, some, you know, thinking about what will happen when the CUSA potentially becomes a rural utility and you have the BUS, the Public Utility Regulatory Commission. Can you speak or maybe, um, Suzie, if you'd like to say a few words on your perceptions about, um, regulation, how that might pan out in, in Ghana in the coming, in the coming years? Is that something, would you like, we can maybe get this mic, we have a lot of technical issues. You can try and, yes, I know.
Thank you very much. I think this is very regulation and this whole process becomes very, very brief. And, and to actually try to address what the question on the, on the screen, that how should professionalized service creation be? I think, and what has to be done, that the format is to review a regulatory, at the institutional framework and including regulatory framework in the country. For Ghana, we have recognized that this is very key. And so in our revised national water policy, we have made mention of that, and the proposal is to have a Water Services Act. And actually to look at that. And that would actually give us the opportunity to identify the gap in the overlap. But we have actually identified that the overlap. So to look at that and then begin to draft, uh, a Water Services Act, which we recognize as not a sober bullet, but at least will give us a very good start to be able to address such a thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think, um, we'd love this discussion to go on a lot longer, but we do have to respect, uh, your time. Um, there was one question about the DRC that wasn't answered. Is that, it just?
Oh, yeah.
It will be good after this, you know, you could maybe meet and discuss.
We should.
How you go, maybe.
We will ask them about, uh, wow, can Uganda how to do it?
I think this, uh, uh, it's tomorrow or Friday, we have a discussion, a very big discussion on this topic.
Oh, fantastic.
And, uh, the person who is doing the, uh, the, the sector is right over there and they're already presenting, and that's one. We'll, we'll have a very ample, they will talk on this.
Thank you very much. So now we'd like to, you've all talked about funding, that funding was key. It was key for different activities to make services viable, to attract ASPs, the developing skills in whichever arrangement you're dealing with, having well-established institution and just financing in general. So in the room, we have, uh, Nabil Chimali from the Conrad Hilton Foundation. Um, the Hilton Foundation is a flexible funder, uh, is here to support government in its efforts. One of the findings of the review we're conducting is that the Hilton Foundation has largely been supporting activities, running at district level and at the level of the service delivery models, which is leading to some success, but also some challenges, because obviously there are systemic issues that go well beyond the district level. So that's, uh, an important finding. And maybe with that in background, I'd like to ask Nabil maybe to reflect a little bit on the different options that you have for supporting these efforts. And then maybe you can, uh, interact with government representatives about how to support them better. More, yes.
Thank you. Can you hear me well?
No, this is not very well.
Okay.
No, it's not working.
Is this better?
Yeah.
So, thank, thank you so much. I, I will be very brief because this is the end of the day, but just, I, I wanna thank you all for being here, our partners from the governments and for your contributions and for your partnership. And thank you all for attending this session. And, and thanks also to Julia and Harold for organizing this. Uh, the, the second point I wanna make before I answer those questions is that the way we operate is that we try to bring all the learning, uh, over the years to, back to the sector. So whatever we learned here, uh, from working across different countries, uh, we are looking at this and, and trying to see what works, what doesn't work, and, and really share as much as possible with everyone. So whoever is interested, uh, in this report, who hasn't seen this report, please reach out to us. We will share this report with you. We will share the final study because the final report, because this is not the final results. And we will be having the same, uh, meetings, uh, in, in each country. Uh, we'll, we'll discuss and share the dates with you, uh, in due time. So please feel free to reach out to learn more about that because our objective is to, to share as much as possible. So with this, uh, since we're talking about, about learning, we learned that infrastructure alone is not enough to ensure safe water services. And I, I really hope that many of you here agree with me. And so instead of only engineering infrastructure, we, we would like to also engineer partnerships. So this is why we wanna combine, our approach is to combine infrastructure with technical assistance to improve operational maintenance, improve financing, improve sustainable, uh, services. Because our definition to success is to ensure professional, sustainable and affordable services to everyone. So with, with this, I, I just wanna prompt everyone here, and this answers the question that you asked Vini about how flexible or patient donors are. Uh, okay, uh, le messa. So I, I cannot speak on behalf of all the donors, of course. I can only speak on behalf of the Hilton Foundation. We are a very flexible and patient donor, because we believe in systems change and we know that systems change takes a lot of time because it involves a lot of human behavior and, and behavior change. And for people who smoke and who try to stop smoking, they know that changing behaviors takes a lot of time. So there's a lot of this in what we do also, and a lot of psychology. So, so it takes a lot of time and we are patient and we are long-term partners. But we are not doing the work directly. We are empowering institutions that are mandated by law to do that. And, and I mean governments who are very well represented here. So we just take one, one example, linked to financing, uh, because this, this came up a lot in the conversations here. And I, I think the, the prompt is, we have flexibility, we have resources, but we have very limited resources. And the needs are great. So the prompt is for all of us here in this room, governments and non-government partners, is to see how can we better support you to identify the right financing approaches to to sustain those services. For example, to access, uh, large financing pots like uh, multilateral development banks. How can we help you improve, uh, collection, billing and collection? Uh, colleagues from Ethiopia just mentioned the role of governments and operators to enforce those regulations and collect money from, against water services from citizens. So please think how our small contribution and the limited resources that we can, that we have can maximize this impact and, and help you, uh, structure those, uh, uh, those processes for billing, for collection, for, uh, developing bankable projects to finance more infrastructure. This is where we see our role as, as a, as a partner and a donor in, in, in this. Uh, and and there are many other areas that, that, that were identified in this, uh, in the study. I, we don't have time to go into all the details, but this is one example that where I, I really wanted to prompt you to, to think about, uh, about this. Does this cover what you want me to, I mean, I don't, I really don't think it's like covering everything. I'm really trying to be very, like, quick and, and straight to the point here, but happy to answer your questions also.
I think that opens up the discussion nicely. Uh, maybe we can, we're, we're almost out of time, but I think this we can take a, yeah, reaction from the.
Well, I, I can, I can, I can shoot a question. So if I got you correctly, you're saying that the Hilton Foundation would help governments to frame out alternative financing mechanisms to get this operational. So for example, um, in the case of Uganda, we have been trying to figure out how to leverage our patient capital of our, um, uh, the National Social Security Fund in trying to see, and, and it touches the question, I think, he asked, I don't know, about how long can governments wait? Or when will we be able to subsidize? And, um, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if that is a sort of conversation we could be engaged in or perhaps, um, uh, looking at climate funding in terms of framing out. So in other words, we have what we call the public finance investment strategy that spells out the alternative funding from, from the traditional, the, 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 um, uh, sorry, for lack of a better word, the, the, the donor funding or, 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 or debt, or debt and, and domestic, uh, finance. So would you be open, would the Hilton Foundation be open to have a deeper conversation in helping to see how we can frame out this that we're grappling with, because we don't seem to have the expertise uh, or bones, or bones to get in? I don't know.
Okay, okay. And then I'll answer. Yeah, one quick question related to what the professor already said. Uh, just, we as the Ministry of Water and Energy, for example, uh, an internal ministerial initiating for regulatory programs, regulatory practice, both for rural and urban. So let's sit aside urban settings, but, uh, for the rural settings, we have, you know, an independent, you know, department under the land management, is the excellency ambassador for, where we are bringing up our ministerial technical groups working around for regulatory. And that regulatory practice is just for us to be able to come up with our own, you know, directives, ministerial directives, to be cascaded down to the regional water bureaus. So that, that directive to be applied for implementation directly. So that, you know, all our stakeholders, CSOs or NGOs, development partners, different stakeholders in the water sector, will use that legal instrument, uh, you know, to be used in their own, you know, governance and capacity development, you know, practices. Once, you know, the service delivery projects are implemented, completed and, and handed over to the user communities. So we have already, of course, the proclamations, regulations and directives as, as legal frameworks to be used for governance practice. But this regulatory practice, which we are currently working is taking into account of the current context, national, regional, global and environmental contexts, and of course, other institutional contexts. So that we will be able to came up with a very friendly, sound monitoring practice. If, if, you know, if that foundation is flexible to support that program initiative, we are most happy to discuss this.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to have offline conversations on all that and, and definitely this is, uh, much more than we can, we can cover in a session. And, and, you know, we're not an, an implementer. We are a donor in a very small one. But just to, to answer the questions, uh, with, with examples. Where in, in, in Ethiopia, for example, the, the government, and you mentioned that, Avera, is currently switching in rural areas from diesel pumping into, uh, solar pumping. Uh, and what we are currently doing, we are funding a small research program to look into the feasibility of claiming, uh, carbon finance from this switch from diesel to solar pumping. So climate finance is something that's complicated. It's a whole science and it's expensive.
Tell me about.
We don't know. Maybe, maybe whatever is gonna, whatever credit, carbon credit is generated, doesn't even cover the transaction cost. We don't know. This is why we are doing this study to see if it covers or it doesn't cover. This information is valuable for this sector. This is the kind of activities. You mentioned, uh, uh, for the case of Ethiopia, Professor Pamela, the
Uganda?
Uh, Uganda, sorry. Uh, the, uh,
Leveraging our patient.
Exactly. I, I, I am not an ex, uh, financial expert to.
But you can get us one.
Yes, I can definitely help you get one.
But an example where we could, where, where we can fund and something of this is already mentioned here on, on the second point. So you have a policy for operation and maintenance.
Yes.
We are very much interested in looking at water services from an operation and maintenance perspective, because this is the objective. So you have a model for area service providers. If you need help to incubate or to find an area service provider who can, who has the qualifications, who can operate infrastructure where we can help, we can package infrastructure rehabilitation with technical assistance for performance-based contracting, for example, or, uh, drafting a proper, identifying proper key informants indicators for performance rewards. And, and all this, that what's required to do that. And we know that you have limited funds. We could even provide part of the capital to make it more
Functional.
More, no, more, make it more interesting, less risky for an operator, an area service provider to engage in rural areas where we don't know if things are gonna work or not work according to your model. So, I mean, those are just in a very unstructured way. Few examples of what we can do, and there's no one approach or service delivery model. It depends on the specificities and the combination. But we are happy to discuss those and we wanna prompt you, all of you, to think about these models.
Fantastic.
I've talked a lot about that, but I'll stop.
Thank you.
Well, I know it's before, uh, I wanna be a little, uh, I'm afraid you're gonna have stuff going on here, but I think, look, to close up, and we're just at time, so thank you for your patience. And what is clear to me is that we have a set of governments with clear visions, with frameworks in place. Maybe not all are moving at the same speed, maybe not all are getting to the same point, but you have that vision. And I think it's, that the wonderful thing is for us, the external community, the large business realm, to support you to help you. And then you get into the nuts and bolts of indeed. to help you, and then you get into the nuts and bolts of indeed, how can a donor like Hilton Foundation help with this, how can you like that help? But the important thing is that you have that guiding light, that vision, because we need, as I said in the opening slides, we need, there's a moral obligation to reach with people in rural areas. So it's very heartening. Can we give a round of applause, please, to all of our friends?
Thank you very much. I'm sure the discussion will continue.